Let's bow our heads for prayer, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father who is good and merciful, we bow humbly before you this evening. We're thankful, Lord, for this day that you have made. We have been glad and we continue to rejoice in it. We consider that you have provided us with so many benefits. What can we render unto you but a praise? We thank you, Lord God, for an opportunity yet again to conduct the town's business. We ask God for a modicum of peace in the chambers. We ask God always that you continue to bless our first responders and military personnel wherever they may serve. In the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let's stand in pleasurable allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Any questions? All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda as presented with three or four items on. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Public comments. I'll ask Loretta Bird to come forward. That was good timing, Loretta.
I apologize. I had to go home. Had a little emergency at my house. My husband, he's okay. Just want to tell you a few things about what's been going on and what's to come. I know y'all saw all the scarecrows on Main Street in Benson, and we had 25 entries this year. And I'll be honest with you, I was amazed at the amount of traffic that was on Main Street. People came downtown to take pictures. We had cars pulling over, photographing. And our plans are to continue this event next year because it really, it helped the merchants as well. The Veterans Day celebration was a huge success, and while it was cold and windy, we had a good attendance. The committee members with the mayor, Betty Jo Young with American Legion Auxiliary, Susan Wallace with BAO, George Murphy, American Legion Commander, Dennis Easton, American Legion Riders, Tim Messer, Parks and Rec, Janelle McCain, and myself. And plans are to do this event on an annual basis, and the sponsors were... Okay, I can't list them all, so. The downtown continues to be very busy. Everyone is gearing up for the Christmas season. B-Suite Children's Boutique closed, but we were able to get a new business to rent the building, gosh, within 24 hours. And it's a western clothing store, which I'm very glad to have another one of those back in downtown Benson. La Piazza Restaurant plans to reopen soon. We're not quite sure, but plans are to reopen. Trefay has closed, and we have passed information on to potential businesses. Hopefully that location will be either rented or sold to a new business soon. We continue to help new businesses that want to locate in downtown Benson. Currently, our problem is very little inventory. There are a few empty spaces, but the property owners choose not to rent them. And if you know of anyone who owns any of those properties, please talk to them about the importance of filling their building with merchants so our downtown will continue to thrive. The Chamber will be glad to help coordinating meeting with a potential tenant or pass them on to someone that can help them. And it's my opinion, it is the opinion of the Chamber Board, that we really need an economic downtown director. The Chamber does not have the funds to hire someone for that position, and we strongly encourage you to find a way to fund this position. We're doing all we can at our office, but our time is limited. Christmas on Main is December 3rd. The tree lighting is at 6:00. I hope you'll join us at Benton Square because we always introduce you guys. Here's a flyer about it. You're going to see a new look at Christmas on Main this year a little bit, and I'll tell you about it. From 5:00 until 7:30, the stores will be open for shopping. At 6 o'clock is the tree lighting, and at 6:30 is the parade. After the parade, we're going to go back down to the singing grove. Benson Little Theater is going to be presenting a Christmas concert onstage, free for everyone. There'll be visits with Santa there. There's an antique tractor show, classic car show, smores, free smores, hot chocolate, popcorn, and some food trucks. And as always, we're encouraging everyone to bring a new unwrapped toy. We don't charge parade entry fees for this parade. The entry fee is a new unwrapped toy because we have our toy drive, which you'll hear about that shortly. We're in the planning process for 2022, and we look forward to a year of recovery and trying to get back to normal. And if there's anything that we can help you with at our office, please give us a call. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Loretta. Individuals wishing to address the board are asked to provide their name and address for the record. Come forward.
Good evening. My name is Janelle McCain. My address is 700 North Lincoln Street in Benson. And I am the Director of the Benson Area Ministerial Association. It's good to be in front of y'all tonight. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I wanted to update you on what's going on with Bama. It's a busy time in our community and with Bama, and I wanted to let you know of what's going on so you can pass on the information. On Saturday, this coming Saturday, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Martin Marietta at the quarry is going to have a canned food drive for our food pantry. Our food pantry is very low right now. Our families have increased in number the last month, and so we are excited that they have decided to do this for us. They will, it will be a drive-through. You drop off your canned foods, and then they will provide a meal. And you can see the quarry as well, so I invite everyone to come to that on Saturday and support our local business. They are a good company. Secondly, we will have our community Thanksgiving meal, our annual meal on Thanksgiving Day from 10:00 to 12:00 at the fire department. Again this year, we will have it as a delivery and drive-through service. So if you know of anyone that cannot get out or cannot have a Thanksgiving meal, please let us know, and we will deliver it to them. Our churches all cook the items for the meal. The Benson Area Women's Organization donated money to buy our turkeys, and so we are extremely grateful for that partnership. So please let me know if you have any questions or anyone that needs a meal for that day. We provided 700 meals last year, so that's what we'll be preparing this year. Lastly, as Loretta mentioned, Bama in partnership with the Chamber will have our annual Christ Community Christmas Closet on December 11th. That will be from 9:00 to 12:00 at the Family Resource Center, which is right beside the fire department. We will, we have families come, and they shop for their children for Christmas. So we need toys. There'll be lots of opportunities. You will hear both at Christmas on Main, through the churches, and other opportunities to collect those toys for those kids. We served over 600 last year. So that is a very important event for these families. So if anyone have any questions, thank you. We appreciate your support a lot.
Thank you, Ms. McCain. Anyone else wants to come and address the board, come forward. Does any of the Commissioners have any questions of the department heads that had annual report or had dated monthly report? Any questions of them? If you remember, in October, we had a meeting that was continued, and we're now starting to pick that meeting up. And I'm going to ask the Comprehensive Land Use Presentation by Withers Ravanell. Come forward.
Thank you very much, Board of Commissioners, and thank you to the public who are here tonight. This is a continuation of the Town of Benson Comprehensive Plan Project. My name is Daniel Rao. I am with Withers Ravanell. We are the consulting firm that has been working with the town on the development of this project. Tonight, I'm just going to give an overview of the project, why we do it, and kind of the timeline of where we are in the project process. As I mentioned, my name is Daniel Rao. With me on this project, you may have seen Caroline Richardson with Withers Ravanell. And we had a subconsulting firm, WSP, for our transportation engineering. That is staffed by Siavong Shalat. So these are some of the faces that you may have seen during this process and during the public input process. As I mentioned tonight, we're going to cover the purpose of a comprehensive plan, discuss the workflow of this particular one. I want to give recognition to the stakeholder group who are instrumental in the development of this plan. I'll briefly cover the plan contents and discuss how recommendations were made as part of this document. So first and foremost, why do we do this project? Why do we spend money on this type of plan? It's really threefold, and primarily it has become a state requirement. Per North Carolina General Statute, Chapter 160D, any municipality that wants to continue enforcing its zoning ordinance and its zoning regulations must adopt and reasonably maintain either a comprehensive plan or a land use plan by July 1st of 2022. For the purposes of this, when we use the term reasonably maintain, we're generally thinking a five- to 10-year update window for that. So first and foremost, it's going to be required by the state if you want to have zoning. But it's much more than that. The second point here is that it is used by town leadership, such as yourselves, as a decision-making tool when viewing future rezonings or other amendments to the ordinance. There's a consistency statement that is made, and it can look to the comprehensive plan, and it can look to the future land use map to determine if a application that comes before the board is consistent with the plans put in place and the vision of the town. And thirdly here, part of plan development is establishing a vision for the Town of Benson and identifying measurable and tangible action items that can be undertaken by staff and stakeholders in order to achieve that vision. This plan outlines those items in a manageable way for staff and stakeholders to move forward with this vision. So talking about the project workflow, this project began in 2021 at the beginning of the year. We started with background research. This was a way to get an understanding of the Town of Benson as it is today. Through that, we looked at demographic data, existing plans and previous planning efforts, the history of the town and the regional context. We took that information, and we brought it forward to the stakeholder group during scenario planning and plan development. And this initial scenario planning gave us an opportunity to work with town leadership and town citizens to determine what the vision and what the idea of Benson in the future is going to look like. What are the goals? How do we tackle this? We took all the sketching that we did with the stakeholder group during that time, and we digitized it. We then brought it to the public in July for a public workshop. This was twofold. Firstly, we wanted to get input on what we've put together so far. That includes the scenario planning efforts we'd done. Secondly, we wanted to give an opportunity to the public to speak freely about what they'd like to see in the future of Benson, and we recorded that information. That took us to the visioning and implementation step, probably our largest step. That's where we consolidated all the information that we'd worked with the stakeholder group in addition to the feedback from the public input and from the public workshop to determine the vision, the goals, the action items, and begin drafting the future land use map. Just a couple weeks ago, I was here for the open house and public hearing. At that time, we held, I believe, a four-hour open house in the room behind me where we displayed this information, the findings from the plan, and we wanted to get public input from that. Another opportunity to receive public input that was furthered by the public hearing process in which we heard additional input from the public about their concerns or optimism about the plan. We worked very closely with Aaron Joseph, the Planning Director, to ensure that that feedback we received in October was incorporated, that we heard the public and integrated their comments into the plan. And that brings us to adoption. Last week, the Planning Board gave a recommendation of approval of adoption for this plan, and tonight would be the, would be the adoption of the plan, if willing, of the board. So again, as I mentioned earlier on, this plan would not be possible without the stakeholder group. They started off with scenario planning with us, but they have been with us throughout the process giving feedback on chapters on the future land use map and advising us when needed. So I want to read their names out loud, and I know a majority of them, I believe, are here tonight, and I want to thank them. So Mayor Medlin, Frederick D. Nelson Jr., Kimberly Pickett, Josh Hefner, Charles Harper, Tim Robbins, and Tyler Douglas. Sincerely thank you for your efforts throughout this process and this project. Your free time has made this a better plan for the town. So what is in the plan? Quite simple, actually. It has an introduction. We talk about the context or the existing conditions of the town. We establish the visions and goals of the town. We look into three focus areas that required a little bit extra attention. And then we delve into the action items, perhaps the mediest of the document that contains our recommendations for the town. We then look into the future land uses and the future land use map, and we bring everything back together at the end with a implementable matrix containing the action items for staff and stakeholder use moving forward. But in general, we're only asking three basic questions throughout this process. Question one is where are we now? We look at the context. Where is the town today? The second question, and probably everyone's favorite question, is where do we want to be? What should Benson look like 10 years from now? What do we want our children to have when they live here? And then the third question is what we address primarily through the document is how do we get there? We know where we are. We know where we want to be. How do we bridge the gap? And that's what we put forward in a large portion of this document here with the action items, the focus areas, and the future land use map. So to briefly cover how recommendations are made as part of this plan, we did establish three focus areas that we worked with Aaron Joseph to establish. This is the water and sewer infrastructure of the town and the constrictions against growth that that infrastructure may or may not have at this time. We also look at the Lee Street complex and East Parish Drive. The land around the Lee Street complex, which was a plan developed just a few years ago, a beautiful plan that envisions a bright future for the Lee Street facility, Parks and Recreation, and various amenities. Our task was how do we maximize the impact of this? So we look at infill development and transportation infrastructure there. And finally, we worked with Aaron to identify three individual large lot parcels that we believe are better suited in the future for nice commercial or industrial development. So we examine each of those parcels and determine what work needs to be done to get those parcels shovel-ready and so that their highest and best use is beneficial to the citizens of this town. This takes us to the action items. As I mentioned, these are measurable, specific items. They are directly tied to the town's goals and the overarching vision of the town. For ease of use, we categorize them into six categories: community, economic development, utilities, land use, parks and recreation, and transportation. If adopted and this document moves forward, these categories will help staff and stakeholders organize efforts moving forward with this project. And finally, that brings us to the future land use map. We did have a few tweaks made. We did have a few tweaks made since the October public hearing where we had citizen comment as local experts on the highest and best use for specific parcels, and we worked with Aaron to integrate those in. That was identifying commercial in the town core that may be better suited along more largely-used roadways and identifying residential uses that may be better suited as they are adjacent to a elementary school. These are the types of changes we implemented with Aaron based on comment from the October public hearing. But it does continue to build off the success of the existing future land use map. We use the same framework, and we use a lot of the same uses. We did want to tie residential closer to the town's core. We did want to use the I-95, 40, 301. We wanted to use those major corridors and leverage them for future commercial and industrial growth. And we did implement two new uses, the town center and the regional mixed-use junction use for more specialized development in the future based off the goals of the town. And in essence, that is how the plan is formatted, and I want to thank you again for your time tonight.
Now, the continuation of the public hearing. Anyone that wants to make comments or have suggestions or whatever about this plan, then come forward. Give your name and your address.
Mayor, while people are making up their minds to come up, I'd like to refer back to Daniel's mentioning of Aaron Joseph, our Director of Planning and Zoning, and her participation in this plan. But I'd also like to ask that her name be shown in the, in the actual document. I think that's important, for her name to be there. She drove the whole project from, from day one, and so we'd appreciate it if you do that. Thank you.
Anyone'd like to come forward? While no one's coming forward, I close the public hearing. Now, we consider the comprehensive land use plan and the future land use map, and we're looking for approval from the board. Everybody, everybody has a copy of the plan, and if you have any questions, now is the time to answer.
I have a question.
Ask them.
Okay. How many properties went from residential to commercial?
I don't have the, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I believe probably around, from residential to commercial, probably around, from the public hearing to now, probably around 20. Not from the original future land use map, but since October.
What would that look like if they wanted to, say they own like a big tract of land, got kids, they want to end up giving their house, you know, some land or kids to build, but we got this commercial now? What does that going to look like for them as far as hindering them?
So the future land use map does not change the current use of the land, doesn't change the zoning. And that, the, the base zoning is what they can build. So if it is a residential zone, they're, they're fully capable of continuing to have that land as residential. In the future, if they, the children wanted to sell that land for commercial enterprise, that would ease that process along in the future. I will say, in the October hearing, in the public, public open house, I should say, beforehand, we did receive, I believe, eight, eight family members who owned parcels that were commercial and sought to get them to be moved to residential, and we did, we understood that concern and we made that change for them.
So the properties that are going from residential to commercial, is all the property owners being like notified?
The same notification that would go on for this, this future land use map. I mean, changes have been made.
But as far as the, the property owners, have they been notified of any of this?
No, sir. The, the primary changes that were moved to commercial were done along 242, where we saw, where we already had a good amount of commercial occurring already. And then at the nook of two major corridors, I'm not sure, unfortunately, I don't have the corridors off the top of my head, but we had just missed one and had it as residential, basically at an interchange, and the property owner said that's not going to be residential, so change it to commercial. And that's why that change was made. Most of the other, if not all the other, changes were along 242.
Yeah, the one I'm thinking of is down 301.
Okay.
I think it was residential, and I see it now as commercial. But I'm comparing the two maps correctly.
That would have come from a specific request to make it from the landowner if we had changed something like that.
Just to clarify, this is just a future plan that we can use as guidance. This, as you said, just make sure I heard correctly, this doesn't change the zoning, so this will not create any non-conforming use issues.
Correct.
And so if they are residential now, they are still residential, and, and they can still build their house if the house was to burn down. So there's no non-conforming uses or anything, and then they'll be able to come back to us. If it is another project, we as the board, or whoever the board is at that time, will have the, the control to make that decision based on the circumstances.
Yes, sir. And the board also has the opportunity, if someone came to you and had a rezoning that did not match, was not consistent with the future land use map, the, the board has the capability to say, it is not consistent, but we still approve it. And then that changes the future land use map. So this is, nothing in this is set in stone. This is just a vision for the future that we have planned for, but that, things change, of course. But in terms of non-conformities, no, everything, if it is, it's based on the zoning, and the zoning is not changed by this plan.
But say like if somebody owns a big tract of land, I'm going to say maybe 10 acres of land, and we got it done as commercial now, but it's zoned or whatever the zoning is, R-11. But that big tract of land is not subdivided, you follow what I'm saying? It's not divided up. So if they wanted to divide it up, they would have to come before this board to do so, correct?
That is a procedure question.
Correct. It would have to.
And then we could.
Come up, come up, Aaron.
The general statute defines what is a subdivision. So if it's a large tract of lands, there are certain exemptions, but let's say if it's a standard, they want to subdivide it into a major subdivision where they're doing, you know, 30 lots for single-family development. They would have to come before the board to have approval before that subdivision can take place, or the, or the start of that subdivision can take place.
Well, to give you an example, say like with the 10 acres of land, they got two, three kids, they want to divide it up equally and, you know, plot it out. They would have to come before the board, right?
Not necessarily, because there are exemptions. If you are, so if you're taking 10 acres of land and you're conveying that to heirs or children, I believe it's like two or three acres, that's exempt from a subdivision. But if it's 10, and it wouldn't come before the board, I would sign off on that administratively. But if you're talking about something where it's a, a major subdivision, where you have five, greater than five lots, you have dedication of a new public right-of-way, there are drainage improvements, extension of, that's defined in our ordinance as a major subdivision. That would have to come before the board for preliminary plat approval. And within that, the first finding of fact is, is it consistent with the adopted plans and policies? And that's when that future land use map and comprehensive land use plan will come into play.
Yes, so that's what I was wondering about, like dividing the land up, or say like it's 40 acres, and it's going to be divided up between five kids, whatever, would that have to come before the board? And if so, we could turn it down based on the land use.
Exactly. You could, because if you say, if we, if that, if the future land use map identifies it as the best use for commercial, and they are seeking any type of land use change, whether it's a rezoning, whether it's a, a preliminary plat for a subdivision, we, we look towards this document, and that's why that document is, is very important. Now, there are diff, there are different standards depending on what type of land use decision that you're looking at, but in essence, we are going to look at that document and say, do we want this land to be residential in the future? If the, if the future land use map says that through this process that we just went under and we've identified that this area is suitable for commercial, and that first finding of fact is, is not met, you, you could deny it, certainly. That's, that's true.
But, but on the other side of that, I think what I think is getting at, it gives us the ability to deny it because it's inconsistent with the plan. But if we took it into consideration that it was that kind of circumstance and we approved it even though it was inconsistent, that would automatically change this map, correct?
Right. So if you're, so let's say you're doing a reason, they, they want to rezone it, and it's inconsistent with adopted plans and policies. You could approve it. You have more authority granted to you to do that, and then you would effectively amend your comprehensive land use plan and, and future land use map so that now it is consistent. And, you know, they may, they may have to take that extra step if they, if they, if they want to do a residential development that is, in that, in that, in the future land use map, the comprehensive land use map says, no, this area, we want this to be commercial. We do not want residential development on this corridor. We don't want that in this area. So that's why it's key to get the input that we've gotten, to really look at it, to really map out how the town is growing, where our infrastructure planning is aligning with that, and, and to identify it, you know? It's not a, a perfect process. We're, like Daniel said, this is a vision that we're trying to achieve here, but it always can, you can always look at it again and, and make decisions accordingly as your growth changes. You don't want to have this plan, and we don't ever look at it again for another 10 years. We want to be tracking this as, if this is approved tonight, and consider, and, and come back to it in fi, at least five years to say, did we get this right? Is it lining up with what we think our growth patterns are, the way, and, and the priorities of this town? So we want this document to serve us and to be at the forefront, and that's why it's so important. I hope I, did I answer that right, or?
Any other questions?
No, I'm ready to make the motion.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make the motion that we approve this document.
Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye. Pose, no.
No.
Ayes, three to one, I mean, four to one.
Did you say four to one?
Yes, four to one.
Four to one. Next thing is, consider approval of Resolution 221-2021, request NC DOT statewide project funds, Berry Access Road. And what this is, is, as you know, Berry Global is, is expanding, and they're building a new building that will be theirs, and that means that the road that goes into Berry Global is going to change. And the road is going to wind up being a state road that will run the outer, outer limits of the property up to their building. And, and what this is, there's no money involved with this as far as the board's concerned, but we wanted to, to come back to the board and let them know that we're working with DOT to have them pave this road, and they would provide the funds for it. So this is saying that the recommendation that's come to you that you're in favor of. Any questions?
So what, the recommendation is what? What is the recommendation?
In other words, recommendation is to, to allow DOT to, to do that.
We're, we're asking DOT to pay for it.
Yeah.
I make the motion to approve.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Betsy Whittington, consider approval of an art board mural. Come up, Betsy.
Thank you. I'm Betsy Whittington, and the Benson Arts Advisory Board is requesting that additional, well, that funds be released by the town for our next mural that we're very excited to have approved at our last, that, at our last meeting. The mural that we have gotten approval by the property owner is located at the, on the Bain Street side of the Exxon station across from McDonald's. The three walls are various distances out, they're different levels, so therefore, we decided to put some, something really unique, bright, cheery, something very different from our first mural, which you had up earlier on one of your screens. So this funding is being requested, and these are funds that are earmarked for public arts, and they've been used already for one mural, which is on the side of William Neighbors Building, the old Benson Drug Store. Also, funds for the mule that have been placed, that has been placed at the corner, at the intersection of 50 and 27. And as soon as these funds are approved, Gina Franco, the artist that we have selected for this mural, is ready to get started. The total will be $4,000, and we're requesting the release of the funds.
And just to clarify, it comes from bed tax, so.
Yeah, the tax.
We pay for it and no reimburseals.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah. Where'd you say this is going to be located?
It's on the, it's on the Main Street-facing wall of the Exxon station across from McDonald's.
No wall.
Isn't that Exxon?
Where are the, where are the?
By grind. That's on Big, Big.
Well, the grinds on, yeah. There's, yeah, there's Exxon, the grind, a beauty shop, and something else.
And you're going to put it on that corner?
We wanted some, you know, the first mural we did was historic, subtle, we, you, you know, it was, it was, we loved it, but we want a second one, our next one, to be bright, cheery, welcome to Benson sort of, and coffee and tea, nothing says it more like coffee and tea. So it's, little sayings like, I love Benson, come together, have a nice day. And Gina has done a number of murals around the state, and we're really excited to have gotten her.
Any other questions?
I just want to reiterate because of our Facebook fans that this is paid for by Joko Tourism. We are reimbursed from them from the bed tax. It does not come out of Town of Benson tax dollars. I just want to reiterate that. I make a motion to approve.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Pose, no. Now, attached to this is an agreement, and I assume that what we just did covers that too?
He's already signed it. Vic's already signed it at the bar.
Well, we have Vic. Well, yeah, Vic's already signed it.
He's sign- yes, he has signed it. My understanding is Mr., um, well, Vic owns it.
Yeah, Vic signed it on the next to the last page.
Yeah.
So that, what we've already voted on covers this, this two. Is that right?
I mean, you might wanna make another motion just to be on the same side, just to approve the contract. It's the same form contract you got the other year.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract that goes with what we just voted on.
I make the motion that we do that.
Any other question? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to the mule naming event, too. We gonna have an event for that when we name the mule? Yeah.
There's a lot of interest in that.
We have about fifty submissions overall.
Fifty? Wow.
Uh, consider approval of the grant administrator for community development block grant infrastructure, Tim Robbins.
We started this process, uh, last meeting, if, if you recall. Um, we, uh, we requested, um, submission of, uh, qualifications for engineering and design services. We also did RFP, request proposals for, um, for grant administration services, but we didn't receive enough bids initially to open those, so we extended the advertisement. And, uh, we're here tonight to, uh, ask your favor in, uh, in awarding this, um, grant, this contract for services for grant administration. Um, I think we had four, is that right? Four proposals submitted. Um, and staff, uh, reviewed all four, uh, scored them, and we are recommending award to Ri- Withers Ravenel for these services.
Any questions, uh, Tim? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Maybe you might need to refresh my memory on this.
Okay, this is for the, uh, Community Development Block Grant. I'm sorry, I should've said that. This is for, uh, a sewer rehab project, um, that we've been awarded grant for. And we, uh, we have to, um, procure a firm for design, construction oversight, that type of work. We also have to procure a firm for grant administration work. So, so CDBG sort of expect, they require you to have two different functions in that, in that grant process. Uh, so we, um, we were able to select design and engineering firm, uh, last month. But because we didn't have enough proposals submitted to be able to open, we, we had to extend that advertisement. We've since gone through that process. We've received four, and, um, asking to award grant administration to Withers Ravenel.
So, so, Tim, if I can ask you, there's two different amounts in this. The, the first is the initial amount of eighty-eight-three-sixty. That is the, is that the call, is that the, the bid, is that the bid cost for the initial pre-construction? After that, it says the construction amount of the bid is one point nine million. So, is that, how much is the town of Benson gonna have to pay in this grant, or is this a hundred percent?
We shouldn't have any expense in it.
Okay. So, the eighty-eight thousand that we, the initial grant is gonna cover all of Withers Ravenel. We're not gonna have to pay that out of budget, right?
That's the engineering part, I'll get it.
Well, this will be for grant administration.
Okay.
So, um, just to be cl- just to be clear, we are selecting the same firm. We have selected, uh, the same form, firm to provide both services. We, we believe both, for both, uh, requests, they submitted the best, um, package to us. No, this is, this is for, uh, sewer rehab, uh, replacement or rehabilitation in various locations around town. So, um, these areas were identified with our two thousand, uh, initially with the uh, asset management plan that was done in two thousand eighteen. We since updated it. Uh, and we've identified basically points of failure, significant, uh, I and I areas, things like that within our sewer collection system.
Any other questions? Twenty thousand, two hundred and forty-two linear feet, that's, that's a lot of sewer line, so.
It's a good bit of pipe. It's a good bit of pipe, and, uh, and a good bit of the work. We, we were able to target areas that were some of our most significant failures in the system. So, we, we anticipate pretty good results out of completion of this project in our system.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Okay, Tim, on the contract to lease nitrogen pound.
Town of Kinley has, uh, approached us again this year. If you recall, we, uh, we entered into a contract similar to this last year where, uh, fortunately, we have, fortunately, we have, uh, a surplus of nitrogen credits. Um, they unfortunately don't have enough to get, to get through the year. Um, they, they've reached out to us again to see if they could, could lease some credits for us to, to wrap up the, the year end for them. Uh, they don't need as much this year, but they've asked to, um, to lease five hundred pounds. The terms of the contract, um, are basically just like last year. Payment will be, uh, one dollar per pound for allocation, and then three dollars per pound for the amount that they use. So, so they, they need no more than five hundred pounds, but until they close out the year, they don't know exactly how many they'll actually have to lease to, to satisfy, um, satisfy the state. So, they're asking us to allocate five hundred pounds, they may end up with four hundred, three hundred and eighty-seven, who knows?
Do you know how much they used last year?
I think. Do you remember? It was considerably more. I was thinking it was like two thousand pounds that we allocated last year. Kim's finding it.
Only reason I ask, it looks like there's a cap in here. If I read this right, at two thousand dollars, and I was wondering if they use more than that cap.
But I think they initially asked for allocation, two thousand. So, as an, as an example there, this will likely be a similar thing. They've, they just don't anticipate needing as much, no more than five hundred pounds. They'll likely lease less than the five hundred.
So, we have a surplus, you're saying? We have more than enough?
Yes, ma'am.
I make the motion.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Okay, BRIC grant application. Tim?
We've been working with one of our own call firms to, um, help identify a funding source, and ultimately, a good solution for, uh, the restriction in driving branch that exists, uh, within the public works yard. Um, we've been working with Raimi Kemp and Associates, uh, to, to help us identify a solution as well as a funding opportunity to get, get that, uh, that old pipe out of the ground. Basically, to perform a, a pretty extensive stream, uh, reclamation project. So, we would take pipes out of ground, build a new stream back in place, uh, as well as replacing the culvert under Market Street that, uh, is desperately needed, uh, to be able to get to the new public works building. Uh, so, I think they've done a really good job. They've done a lot of legwork for us. Uh, sort of, sort of worked for free a little bit to try to help us work this stuff out. And they've identified, uh, and have, have some pretty good confidence, um, through the state, uh, the FEMA reps in the state, that, uh, the BRIC brick grant, uh, would be uh, a pretty good option. Uh, they feel pretty confident that we can get this project funded through them. Uh, but obviously, we've, we've got some work for them to do, uh, to be able to, uh, start this process for us. So, I'm bringing before you a, uh, a task order, uh, from Raimi Kemp for thirty-six thousand dollars. That would be for making grant application as well as project management and coordination. So, this, uh, this, this is an expense that, that we would have to bear on our own. Um, if the grant is awarded, then, then we'd, we'd see those monies come back.
This don't work like fire department, right?
It is not, it is not like, uh, like one of the fire departments where, where, we only pay if they win.
I will say that we would not have gotten to the next step if we didn't have a good project to present to them. So, we presented it to the grant, to the brick grant board, and they have given us the go-ahead to move forward with process and, and writing grants. That's promising, you know.
I give you go-ahead, you gonna give me, uh, twenty-eight thousand dollars, whatever.
This was not budgeted, correct?
No.
Anybody have any questions, uh, Tim? I'll entertain a motion.
How much is the grant if we get it, or is it based on?
Was it one point nine million? One point nine million. Um, keep in mind, this restriction in driving branch, uh, the, the pipes that were installed in driving branch to create the property that is currently a public works facility. Uh, if you think back during, uh, severe storm events, hurricanes, uh, the flooding that occurred on US three oh one near the end of Martin Street, uh, that mobile home park, uh, during Hurricane Matthew, uh, those individuals were, uh, I think swimming out of the windows of those mobile homes to evacuate the property. Um, this will help alleviate a lot of those problems that we've experienced in the past in that area. Um, so, this is, this is what we all believe to be the appropriate fix for that section of stream. I think it's the appropriate abandonment of that public works yard, which ultimately will have to be dealt with at some point anyway. Removal of those buildings, um, the fencing, all of that stuff, uh, will ultimately have to be addressed at some point anyway. So, thi- this, I think, is a, is a good mechanism to give us a, uh, to take care of those items as well as, uh, give us some storm resiliency for future events.
So, when will we know if we've been awarded?
Uh, the process, I think it's, yeah, I was thinking it's this spring when, when we'll know about award.
So, if we get this grant, you'll be able to use these funds, and it'll alleviate all of the stormwater backup issues that downtown that we're having? Is that what you're just saying?
It will not alleviate all of them. It will not alleviate all of them.
Well, I, I, I think it's gonna come a time that we're gonna have to address these issues, and we might as well get started somewhere. So, with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Okay, Kimberly Pickett. Approval of the CDBGI project.
So, this all, tonight's kinda, kinda be, um, the CDBGI, uh, show, I guess. This is the, uh, project ordinance for the grant that we were, um, given from CDBG for the eighty-eight-three-sixty. You just approved the grant administration, um, with, um, yeah, with Withers Ravenel. Um, so this is the project ordinance. This is basically my paperwork that I have to put into the system and how I keep up with expenses and revenues. So, I need approval on that.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, the financials.
Yes, and I have before you, um, August and September. I don't know if you want me to do them separate, or if you just wanna approve as one. Um, I apologize for not having August last month. Uh, as y'all are all well aware, I've been shorthanded upfront. So, me and Angie have been working customer service, and that's put me a little bit behind in my own office. Um, but before you, I have the August twenty-twenty-one financials. Um, at the end of August, we should've been at sixteen percent. Revenues were at fourteen point eight-two. Um, expenditures were at twenty-three point two-eight. Obviously, this is on trend with our normal years. Our revenues will bump up in December and January. Um, and then September twenty-twenty-one, we should be at twenty-five percent. Our revenues were at twenty-four point fifty-eight, and our expenditures were at thirty-two point sixty-nine. Um, if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions?
How are we doing on utilities and everything? Are we square zero on everything?
Yeah, we're looking good. As far as like cutoffs and stuff, is that what you mean? Yeah, I mean, we got, when we had this, this stay, um, last year during COVID, we've collected all the monies from that, that, where the people stayed. Obviously, we had people leave. We're putting that in debt set off. Um, as I've told y'all before, we're like low man on the totem pole with debt set off. Um, unfortunately, the state's gonna come before local government. Um, but if they move back into town, then we're collecting revenues. At that point, we're collecting their bills. Um, so we're keeping a check on it, but, but as far as the people that actually stayed, they're up to, they're paid up, so.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Consider approval of resolution two-twenty-twenty-one CDBG.
All right.
That's the Bible.
All right, I'm gonna read you the administrative part that I have to read, and then I'm gonna let, uh, any questions you have, Tim can explain. But this starts on page two-forty of your packet. Um, so they, they gave us a memo. The purpose of this memo is to summarize the CDBG program manual um, for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one Community Development Block Grant Infrastructure Program being presented for adoption at the Town of Benson, um, Board of Commissions meeting. The town was awarded a CDBGI grant from the NC Department of Environmental Quality Division of Water Infrastructure in April of twenty-twenty-one for fiscal year twenty funds. Um, for planning costs up to the release of funds, grant milestone, impending North Carolina budgetary approval, forthcoming fiscal year twenty-one funds for construction after the release of funds. So, our, correct me if I'm wrong, our grant administration and, um, planning comes out of the fiscal year twenty budget. And then the construction is forthcoming for the twenty-one budget. So, that will, will be given our award letter once the, the budget passes, okay? This CDBG program manual contains compliance plans and policies designed to meet requirements for participation in the CDBGI program. A complete copy of the CDBG program manual is located at Town Hall for any, um, citizens that want a copy of it or want to see it. In the addition, in the adoption resolution, the town authorizes the following persons and or successors so titled to execute any grant-related documents that do not require the mayor's signature. That would be Fred Nelson, Town Manager, myself, Assistant Town Manager and Finance Director, Angela Thornton, the Town Clerk, or Tim Robbins, the Public Utilities Director. These persons are also listed as compliance officers in certain provisions. The manual includes all required CDBG plans, policies, even though some of the activities may not be included in all specific CDBG project. The following provides a brief summary of the required items contained in the program manual. And I'm, there are, um, twenty-four requirements. I'll let y'all read through those. Um, y'all have that. And then we have the resolution for you to adopt. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Tim. Is that, is that good, Angie?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. She is our person that's keeping up with it here at town and making sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, so.
Glenn is here as well.
We got a thumbs up from Glenn.
All right. So does anybody have any questions as of right now about the CDBGI grant and how it works and what it's for?
No questions?
Okay, so then we would ask that you, um, approve the resolution twenty-two twenty dash twenty twenty-one CDB, CDBGI program manual resolution.
Make a motion, we approve, uh, resolution two twenty dash twenty twenty-one CDBG.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no.
All righty, thank y'all so much. Everything.
I'm going to tell you. I wouldn't dare ask the board, how many of you read every page there was in this packet?
I did not.
If you did. You're going to need to go see Max. Your eyes are going to be blurred. I did read the, the, uh, the one that we voted on earlier, but I, I think you, you're beginning to get a feel for what, uh, Kim and Tim and all of us have been up against for a good number of months. And that is, we got a lot of stuff in the hopper. And these grants are for specific things that, uh, for instance, in the, in the sewer that we were talking about and how much sewer it is. Pipe's got to be replaced. A lot of those are pipes that come loose and they're running the sewer in the ground. And water gets in the pipes when it rains a lot and, and then it floods. So, so there's a lot of stuff going on in the town of Benson and, uh, the only thing I can say to you is, is stay tuned.
And I plan to do that, Mayor, as long as I'm going to stay real to it.
Town managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to thank, uh, the Withers, Withers Ravenel team for supporting us like they have to throughout the, uh, comprehensive land use plan, uh, project. It is a top-notch, uh, uh, project, uh, that, that came to fruition. I want to thank also the town staff that, that participated, but mostly the community. Community really did play a pivotal role in making sure that that plan, uh, addressed the, the needs of the town, the desires of the town, uh, what the future might look like for Benson. And it's just an exciting time as an add-on to what the mayor is saying. We, we have some, uh, seventeen-plus, uh, um, projects, uh, large and small, working at the same time. And, and, uh, our team is keeping up with all that. Thank you for your support, board members. Look forward to some, some more fun for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
November, you, you going to read that one?
Um, well, uh, November eleventh, the all emergency town facilities will be closed for, uh, all non-emergency, excuse me. Town facilities will be closed for Veterans Day.
And we'll be back Friday.
And be back Friday. And then November twenty-five and twenty-six, uh, the facilities will be closed for Thanksgiving. We will be having on the seventeenth of December, uh, our, uh, Christmas celebration, which will be just as it was last year, where we'll have a drive-through for the employees to come through and, and get a meal and their, their checks. And, uh, we will, uh, then, uh, send them home half a day.
So how long do you plan to be closed for Christmas?
Uh, Christmas is, uh, the three days, yes.
Three?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Another for me, Mr. Are any questions on anything from anybody?
Board of Commissioners.
I've just got one thing. Um, Fred and I spoke about this today and I've asked this of the board before. And I'm going to bring it up again, maybe with a little bit more urgency. Just like the mayor said, we've got a lot in the hopper right now and we're spending a whole lot of money designing new plans, getting new land use plans and all of these other plans. And I've got a huge concern. I'm hearing it a lot from the, uh, people downtown. We really need to find a way to fund an economic development director. We've not had one since Joe Stalin's, this board, and I supported the decision not to join the alliance that's now created around us with Dunn and Four Oaks. And I don't like to look at that as competition, but that's fixing to be our competition if we don't have somebody in this town running that point. And so I'm going to ask this board again and ask Mr. Fred, as I did today, for your support. I think we need to fund that position and get it hired as soon as we can. If not, there's no use in us continuing to approve the money to spend on these plans because we've got nobody utilizing them. That's just the way I look. Other than Erin, she does a great job with planning, but she's after the fact. We need somebody out there running point to, to help, uh, put these parcels together to bring business to town.
Ms. Holly.
I'm, I'm waiting for him to.
I'm finished. It's all, it's all I got. I'm just going to put it on y'all.
Well, that's fine. I, I, I agree with him. I, I think it's going to take some planning. As you know, when Mr. Nelson took the job, he let us know straight from the beginning that he was not an economic developer. I think you got blessed with Matt. I think he fit thimble and fumble and he got you through some things. But that, that's because he knew something about it. Now, he was very honest with us about not knowing. So yes, I am in favor, but I think it should come under his direction as how he want to utilize that, okay? So I agree with you. Well, um, I'd like to thank Erin and, is it Withers?
Withers Ravenel.
Withers Ravenel. For all the hard work. I am looking forward to the future, um, in Benson and all the funding that we will be receiving. I'm, I'm just, um, excited and maybe we can get some things happening in Benson. And I'll look forward to the discussion about economic development, um, director.
I ain't got nothing.
I was working some up because I thought everybody else was going to have something to say, so.
I made, I made it easy for you.
He did make it easy for you, so. Happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas.
Well, thank you, Doc.
I, uh, I was, uh, convincing with our legislators today and, there's something in the meal, but I'm not sure whether it's going to gel or not. But one thing I did find out that I hadn't known before, and that is that the Alliance got thirty-three million dollars for their sewer and water projects. And, I hope we don't get left behind because of this. But I do really appreciate the work that, that Ravenel has done, uh, for this project. And, uh, I do commend you for finishing in, uh, October rather than in next year. So, uh, our hats off to you and I'm sure we'll be in touch with you somewhere along the line to, uh, to update some things and, and get explanations, so. Anything else anybody has for the good of the cause? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no.